You know the outcome of what?
This bit.
Ladies and gentlemen, now being after 7:00 PM, and I, Michael P. Martin, Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals in the Town of Orleans, are calling this regular meeting to order. Present with me are members of the Board, Tom and Javelin, Mulligan, Cole, McCarty, and Van Giesen, all of whom are welcomed. Also present is Sandy Stewart, who is the Board Secretary, and Tom Evers, who is the Building Commissioner of the Town of Orleans. The first item, well, not in the precept, the adoption of the minutes of the meeting is usually last, but we'll take it first in the agenda. And the minutes were circulated amongst the members, and I'll ask if there's any commentary or motion to approve the minutes.
With their approval?
At the last meeting, Mr. Mulligan, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tom, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? The motion carries unanimously. This is the last meeting of fiscal year 2018. We have two members whose term is expiring, Mr. Cole and Ms. McCarty, both of whom have requested, and I have forwarded their intention with great gratitude, and the gratitude of the colleagues on the Board and the Town of Orleans to the Board of Selectmen to process that request. I note that both of you have the greatest longevity on this board now.
Of what?
The greatest longevity.
Cluttons for punishment.
That's what I was thinking, I was like, what, we just can't say no?
Election time for Board positions. On the zoning board comes once a year, not every four years, and there's no term limits. I think we'll take that in the next, we'll take up that at least place it on the agenda for discussion in the election. We have, and I have three items on the agenda. I happened to bump into David Little the other day. He thought that maybe he had two of these. I haven't.
I think they're all here.
Let's take a look, maybe.
It is.
Two of them are.
Looks like all three of them are that I have circled.
Okay, this is what we'll do then. I have circulated, and I don't know exactly how to structure this discussion, but there is a, came to me from George, Missouri, the town planner, that the Planning Board will have a public hearing on July 24th on the, to accept public comments on the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaws. That's been circulated to you, and it deals with, in a new section, 16440.4, and also an amendment to the schedule of use regulations in 16413. And this is meant to deal with the method and procedure by which the town would deal with marijuana establishments. I'm under the impression, and all I received was this amendment. I think I've seen it before. Maybe it was cycled through the zoning bylaw task force, I'm not really positive. But in any event, this is what the Planning Board wants to discuss on July 24th. I was asked to circulate it amongst the members, and it occurred to me that if there was a consensus, I suppose this bylaw amendment would place the, in effect, the licensing and permitting for marijuana establishments in the Zoning Board of Appeals. The wisdom behind that is that no town body is really equipped, well, maybe they're equipped, but has constant experience in handling hearings. The zoning amendment plugs into 16444, which is what we're, what we deal with for special permitting all the time, and also requires a pass through, through the police and fire chiefs concerning security measures and safety. Otherwise, the public would be entitled to comment principally, well, on all the permitting requirements, and particularly whether there's, the facility would minimize any adverse environmental visual noise, odor, or traffic impacts on the abutters and parties of interest. Parties of interest defined in that bubble that we were familiar with, the people who are given notice for general permitting and variance applications. So, my thinking, subject to the consent, to the sense of the Board, is I'll, I'd carry, if you have any comments, you'd make them now or make them later, we can continue this for another hearing anyway, and I would state the position and comments of the Board, if there's a consensus on them, but not otherwise. Any one or group of you are free to attend the Planning Board hearing and make your own remarks and opinion heard, but in the scheme of things, if you want me to do it for the zoning board as a body, tell me what you think.
So, functionally, this would replace the current moratorium, whatever this becomes, would go to town meeting, get voted on, and be the first instance that would allow such an establishment?
I think so, Matt. This was something, this was, I think, supposed to have been done by another 10 days. I don't know, I'm ignorant of any applications having been filed. When the applications come, this would be the structure.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, Mr. Javelin?
Do you want us to do this right now, this minute, before we start the other?
Well, I've, now, I let the record reflect, Mr. Little has entered the room, we can proceed with that. I didn't, I didn't intend it in that fashion, but I was just trying to, Peter, I was trying to make use of the time that we had, but there was a little bit of a hole.
Okay. Unless the moderator wants our wisdom.
Well, I will, the question is how long it's going to take.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I don't feel in a position to have a substantive and informed discussion about this this evening. I am trying to grasp what we're being asked to grapple with, and to what extent we might have options or not have options is one consideration. As I looked at the existing bylaws, our role, should this pass, was quite delimited, as I understood it, and as I listened to you this evening, it sounded as if our role were more significantly expanded than I'd understood it. The Planning Board hearing you're talking about isn't until late July.
July 24th.
And so, nothing presumably is going to happen between now and then. So, I would ask that, with the consent of my brethren and sister, that we just put this over and conclude the discussion unless other people feel pressured, unless other people feel the desire to comment, in which case, I would defer to Mr. Little, and then we could return to it.
The point here was, I, I think I'd attend the Planning Board meeting out of curiosity, or to state that, generally speaking, if you need an adjudicatory type of hearing, where the folks that could give it to, provide it for the town. Otherwise, I pass no judgment on the mechanism, because it appears to be fairly understandable and manageable. So, I wouldn't speak other than that. If there's a burning desire and consensus amongst the Board, that I should, on behalf of the Board, make a statement to the Planning Board, I will do that. That's what I'm driving at.
So, at this point in time for myself, speaking for myself, I would not want you to make a statement on behalf of the Board, absent more substantial Board discussion.
I wouldn't intend to do so, no.
Thank you.
And if that's, if you're, if others on the Board are in basic agreement with you, then I will abide, I abide by that. I'm not going to speak on the.
Meaning that we'll have a discussion at some point in time?
Either have a discussion, or failing a discussion, I'll keep my mouth shut.
Prior to the 24th, discussion prior to the 24th.
That's right.
Good.
And now, I think implicit in that is that there would be no other member speaking on behalf, an individual, fine, but no other member would speak on behalf of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'm fine with that.
In other words, if you're, if you're the senses that the Chair shouldn't, then nobody should.
No, 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 I'm fine with that.
And we, in that case, we remain silent and let the amendment and the hearing, it's in the nature of a hearing, I'd let that take its course, which is fine with me. This is a courtesy, I put it on the agenda on short notice, because I figured that I was being asked to, for one thing. And the second is, I thought it would be a good idea for you to know what was going on, because it does affect us ultimately, in some form or another. I think we're going to be the folks deciding these.
Yeah, my, I guess I have a different view. I thought our role here was, was to look at this as a new section of the zoning bylaw, and to offer our expertise insofar as we have experience running meetings and hearings, and that we didn't have some grand request for an overview of the role in really responding to a proposal by the Planning Board. And I think we're being asked, as the practitioners of the zoning board, what do we think of this particular bylaw in terms of operating as a zoning board? And not that policy as to the town or anything else, it's just where the people are going to be enforcing this, or administering it, rather, and are there things that jump out of you as a problem in the administration of this bylaw?
You know, Mr. Martin, in the course of the zoning bylaw task force meetings, there would, occasionally, we would be discussing an amendment to the zoning bylaw, and I would, at that level, I would be looking for specific standards, because you, I always took the position that all the members should be, either through my own guidance, or independently, if it's written correctly, would understand what the standards were, so that they could make, so that the Board members could make intelligent findings, and therefore, intelligent decision. The standards, you may say, are, I've summarized them pretty carefully, and Mr. Tom seems, seizes on, seizes on it, and sees also that it's rather broad, and.
It's interesting, it's, in some ways, assuming approval, and assuming an applicant, and assuming approval, will never have to do this tedious work again. Because if it's not approved, nothing, this is.
No, no. This reminds me, Bruce, quite a bit of the 40B applications. FortyB applications come in here where the buck stops, and all the, all the other agencies and boards, authorities of the town have considered, and are funneling their advice to us, and we take that application, and in the course of allowing it, of course, it's all already approved by the state, but in course of allowing it, are able to fashion appropriate conditions, so that the welfare of the citizens of the town is properly addressed, and preserving the integrity of the project. Quite a bit like this, but it's not so, this amendment is, I think, kind of broad. Peter?
My comment is, so far, I'm assuming that the state has already set out criteria for operators denying licenses to those with felony records, et cetera, et cetera. I'm assuming that's all already done, okay? And my, to my way of thinking, if we're, we are handed this, we have been handed this to review, I would be willing to give up my time to have a meeting just about this with us, and it might only take a half an hour, because most of you understand all of this. The only parts that I don't understand are those, this chart back here, A, B, R, RB, you know, those of you who are builders here, and are familiar with construction, et cetera, probably know all about that. But that's the only part I don't understand. It's where weed can be grown, or marijuana, whatever, and where it can't, and where it can be cultivated. So, that's my take. I'm going to assume that we don't have anything to do with the criteria of operators, just the format of the hearings for each operator applicant. And again, I suggest we have a meeting separately, so that all of us understand this. Period.
Why don't we carry it forward to the next meeting? And maybe we can structure this discussion a little more carefully.
The next meeting would be the 18th.
Okay, of July.
Right, and I don't have any applications yet.
That's a good time to have.
All right, that's fine.
If I don't get any applications, we can still have a meeting and do the officer's review and discuss this.
Fine, let's do that. I don't think we need a motion, this is not something that's, there's a timetable, so we'll just.
That's close to the Planning Board meeting.
Yes.
Is there any benefit to having input, so the Planning Board could react to it before their meeting?
Can we invite somebody from the Planning Board to it?
I wasn't intending, no, I wasn't intending approaching it that way. I was intending to make a comment on behalf of zoning board without consulting with the Planning Board, having it, in other words, there's, don't get me wrong, I see nothing wrong with negotiating with or communicating with the Planning Board. I felt, for the past couple of years, that the closer that the two boards are to each other, the better off it is for the town, but the functions and the way they're exercised are entirely different, Jerry.
Well, I have a very small technical point, which I think should be corrected before this goes out for discussion.
Why don't I bring it to the attention of the town planner, that you want to share it?
Sure, sure, it's paragraph G, which requires that all marijuana establishments post a bond.
Yeah.
I don't think the town wants to be in the process. I think that should be only limited to marijuana cultivators. It's only the cultivators who impact the land, and in which the town has an interest. I don't think the town has any interest in getting between a landlord and his tenant, in terms of putting back, or an owner.
I think, I think you're right. This was designed to deal with the cultivators.
The cultivator.
Where the land had to be restored to its original condition.
Right, but this picks up, and it requires a bond by all marijuana establishments. You don't want a bond for some, leasing an office in downtown Orleans selling marijuana. It's, you know, the town doesn't want to get between the lessor and the lessie, which is what that would be. And then, you got the nuisance of keeping track of the bonds, and the, you only want, you only want to issue bonds, and they're absolutely essential to protect the town's interest. And aside from cultivator, I don't think a town has any interest that needs protection with a bond.
I agree, I'll see if we can shortstop that.
Small point.
I will communicate your comments to the town planner, or any members of the Planning Board, if I see them in passing. This is since now that I can, we will all proceed to the hearings, very well. Members of the Board, we have three cases tonight, case number 2091, 2092, and 2093. I'm going to ask if, in all of these cases, the applications of which have been furnished to each member of the Board, whether any member of the Board has had any communication with the applicant or any of the applicant's agents, which would constitute a conflict of interest or otherwise, be, need to be disclosed to the Board or the public. There's no positive response, therefore, I declare that all members of the Board are indifferent and impartial. In case number two, and we have a quorum, on case number 2091, the following members will consider, myself, Mr. Cole, Ms. McCarty, Mr. Javelin, and Mr. Mulligan. That's five members constituting a quorum, all members, in all three cases, are encouraged and allowed to inquire, but will not vote.
Mr. Little, can you proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Little, representing James Witters and his family, and with me this evening in Fosse-Lo, in the back row of Fosse-Lo Construction, who is also the latest contractor. We attended two Conservation Commission hearings prior to coming here. We are receiving approval on Tuesday, but as a result of those meetings, we had a minor change in the location of the dwelling, so I would like to submit out, submit revised copy to the Commission, which I will go over. I don't know if that can be made out.
I'll pass the report to you. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yes. So, if I could draw your attention to the site plan that I provided you, I also gave you a couple of other plans, a planning plan, and a coverage overlay plan, but essentially, what happened when we were appearing before the Conservation Commission was, they wanted to see us push the dwelling further away from the top of the coastal bank. And we had several issues in doing that, we had some board of health variances that were necessary to get, but ultimately, we went back to the Conservation Commission on Tuesday, yesterday morning, and we did get approval for this plan, subject to a minor revision, which we have submitted. The change, essentially, and I outlined it on the sheet of paper, the nonconformity sheet of paper that I provided you. If I could draw your attention to that, rather than the proposed dwelling being 25.6 feet tall, it's now 25 feet tall, the required setback is 38.1 versus 38.4, the proposed actual setback is 25 versus 26, and the nonconformity is 13.1 versus 12.4. So, essentially, the building got slid back a little bit from the top of the coastal bank, the application before you remains the same. We are here because of the coastal bank setback requirement, 16421C, which requires that buildings constructed in the buffer zone to a coastal bank be constructed one and a half times their height away. And as you can see, the existing dwelling is nonconforming with respect to its setback from the top of the coastal bank, and the proposed one is nonconforming as well. But, if I could draw your attention to, actually, the plan that some of you are looking at, this eight and a half by 11, the graphic shows you how we are improving the setback from the top of the coastal bank dramatically, where the new house is going to be pulled back significantly. The closest part of the new house to the top of the bank is the garage, but that area is kind of a topographic anomaly that comes way up close to Gibson Road, so we feel the proposal before you is certainly in keeping with the neighborhood visual character, and also in keeping with the intent of the zoning bylaw. Additionally, one of the things that the Conservation Commission required was a planting plan, so where the old house is coming out, we have proposed a planting plan, so that property gets restored with native habitat, and there is going to be some lawn on the seaweed side of the dwelling. So, I highlighted the on-mike site plan, or the Ryder-Milcock site plan, I highlighted the, both of the existing height calculations and the proposed height calculations, and as you can see, we are improving the nonconforming nature. The existing nonconformity is 15.8 feet, and the new nonconformity is 33.1. The dwelling is now a story and a half, where the current dwelling is a ranch, so that's why the nonconformity only improves by a few feet. And then, we also provided you with building plans, which shows you what the building will look like from Gibson Road, but the front plan is in color, it's, the colors are such that it doesn't, I don't think it's going to stand out, and it's certainly in keeping with other houses on the road. So, as for the special permit criteria, the 51,000 square foot site is adequate for the new dwelling, the resulting building coverage of 3,121 square feet is 11.6% of the buildable upland. The site is suitable for the new dwelling, the nonconformity to the coastal bank is being reduced, and the new dwelling will conform to all other dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw. There will be no new impact on traffic flow or safety, the new dwelling will be in keeping with the neighborhood visual character, the site is served by town water, a new Title V sewage disposal system is proposed, and all stormwater runoff will be contained on the site. The adequacy of utilities and public services are not impacted, and we believe there will be no noise or litter associated with the project, other than temporary noise impacts during construction. And as to the impact on groundwater quality, recharge volume, water quality of coastal and freshwater bodies, we did receive a favorable nod from the Conservation Commission, and we believe that we are going to do everything that is appropriate in protecting those valuable resources. So, I think that would be my presentation. There, we're strictly here for the setback from the top of the coastal bank, and as I said, we're, we are reducing that nonconformity. If I can answer any specific questions, fire away.
You're doing all of this with only 2878 square feet of building coverage?
Right. Yes, sir.
Does any member of the Board have any questions of the applicant? Anyone present wishing to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone present wishing? Yes?
What is the building coverage?
The building coverage is 3,121 square feet, or 11.6 percent. And that also includes the boathouse. The existing boathouse is down on the...
Okay. David, I was looking at the Chris Cannon's plans. That's where I got the 2878.
Yes.
So out of the revision, also include a nudge in the building coverage?
Yes. Chris Cannon's plan did not include the boathouse coverage.
Okay.
So the boathouse is the 538 square feet, is that right?
Yes. And I appeared before the zoning Board of Appeals a few years ago with Bob Stello. Well, no, I didn't. That was built without relief, because he conformed to... No, maybe we did get relief for that. Did we get relief for that, Bob? We appeared...
Thank you.
We appeared before the Zoning Board of Appeals for the reconstruction of the boathouse a few years ago, and Bob did that work as well. I don't know if anybody took a chance to walk down the steps down the bank to see it, but it came out very well.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Or in general, to make a comment upon this application? I mean, comments which would help the board in making a decision. No positive response, so unless you have something further, Mr. Little, I'm going to close this hearing for the taking of evidence, and that's what I'm doing right now. What is the sense? I see this as a fairly benign application. The rigmarole, the renovation movement, sighting of the new residents is substantial improvement on the... Well, it certainly deals with the topography in a sensible way. I'm in favor of it.
No favorable agreement.
I'll second the motion for findings of fact issued to satisfy the requirements of the issuance of a special permit. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I also move now to grant the application for special permit without conditions in the form referred to in the plans filed tonight and with the application to the extent that there's no conflict.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cole. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll now proceed with case number 2092. That's the application of Wendy Harrington for a special permit. Set forth in General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6, under Orleans zoning bylaws, Sections 164, 3C, 1B, and 160... Excuse me. 164, 3C, 1B, and 164, 121A, and 164, 21C, to raise and replace a pre-existing boathouse which is nonconforming with regard to front yard and coastal bank setbacks. This property is located at 67 River Road, Orleans map number 42, parcel 48. In this particular case, I'll designate myself and Mr. Cole, Ms. McCartney, Mr. Javelin, and Ms. Fangizan to decide this application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Little, representing Wendy Harrington. Again, we just received approval for this yesterday and from the Conservation Commission, and I got a revised plan that I would like to submit. The revisions are minor, but they do impact the boathouse. There is no change to the building plans. So I think, I would assume that everybody is familiar with this boathouse that's located at the end of River Road. The white was, which was a general practitioner, a doctor in Orleans, who's down, we built the boathouse in 1940, I believe, and it's kind of been an iconic structure at the end of River Road. So needless to say, my client, Wendy Harrington, wish... It's in a major state of disrepair, but Wendy Harrington is proposing to reconstruct the boathouse as an exact replica, with the exception of elevating it 2.6 feet. And the purpose for elevating it up in the air is because of the increased tides that we get in Pleasant Bay now. The Conservation Commission prefers to see structures that are located on the water or adjacent to the water like this elevated, so when the tide waters come in, they have an opportunity to come in and receive without any interference. So what we are proposing to do here is remove the existing structure, construct a new pile support foundation, which is just going to result in six piles. There will only be six piles driven to support this. Construct the support frame, and then rebuild the boathouse on top of that new support frame. We went to the Conservation Commission, and the one change, or the two changes on the plan were, one, the height, that originally we were proposing to raise the finished floor to elevation of 10. Now we're only going up to 8.8, which we feel will be aesthetically more pleasing, but will still allow the floodwaters to go beneath it. And the first plan that I submitted to ZDA had a stairway providing access to the beach on the beach side of the structure. The zoning, or the Conservation Commission requested that we move the landing and stairway over to the side of the structure so it did not come out in closer to the marsh and is not as visible from the town landing. We also attended a hearing with the Board of Selectmen. Because this project will require the use of River Road Landing, you have to fill out an extraordinary use permit, but also meet with the Selectmen. And they, their only concern is that, once we obtain all approvals, is that the work be restricted to occur subsequent to November and prior to April, so we don't interfere with the fishing community. And we had no issue with that condition, and the Conservation Commission has placed that condition on their approval as well. So there would be, some, an excavator would be parked on the town landing when the piles are installed. Subsequent to that, everything would be done just with trucks, with the staging occurring on Wendy Harrington's property. So as you can see from the building plans that we provided you, we are proposing an exact replica. We, there will be no changes other than the fact that it will be a new structure. There is no electricity that comes from plumbing. We don't propose to install any electricity or plumbing. She wants to keep it the way it is, but she does intend to use it as a boathouse and for a place to gather. It's a pretty nice, pretty nice spot. So we are here for two reasons, as Mr. Marnik explained. One, for the front yard setback. We are currently 5.6 feet and 3.4 feet from the River Road layout. Those nonconformities are going to remain the same. And we are also on the coastal bank, so we have no way to comply with the coastal bank setback requirement. And in the special permit criteria, I noted how the setback calculations apply to this. We believe the site is adequate for the replacement of the new boathouse, as it will be a replica of the existing. The site is suitable for the replacement. There is no change in the footprint. The only change will be the increase in height of 2.6 feet. There will be no impact on traffic flow or safety. The boathouse is accessed by foot from the upland portion of the site. The impact on neighborhood visual character will be negligible with only a 2.6-foot increase in height. Adequacy of methods, sewage disposal, and water and drainage is not applicable, as the boathouse has no electricity, water, or plumbing. There are no utilities or public services associated with the proposed rebuild, and there would be no noise or litter, other than temporary noise impacts during construction. And the planning board has approved this and has conditioned it to ensure the protection of groundwater quality, recharge volume, and water quality of our coastal and freshwater bodies. If I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to do so.
Is it appropriate for us to put that condition concerning the commencement of construction? Or did the Selectmen take care of that?
The Conservation Commission is putting it in their order of conditions.
All right.
And we acknowledged at the Selecting meeting that we would not start construction until November.
So I think we could leave that to the Building Commissioner to take care of it.
So the only remaining thing, we did get approval from the Selectmen, but once we obtain all the other approvals, we have to fill out an extraordinary use of the town landing permit, during which the applicant proposes supplies a bond in the event that any damage occurs to the town landing. But that's the last step that we have to do.
Can I just ask, out of curiosity, if you're going down River Road, there's the historic boathouse and the ramp leading onto the river, the boat ramp leading onto the river. This property is to the left?
To the right. If you're standing, if you're looking at the river?
Yeah.
It's right next to the landing, right?
But there, that little freestanding historic...
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it, the one with the plaque in front of it?
Yes.
Okay?
That's it. And we propose to do an exact replica.
I have one minor construction question. Those power beams, three of them underneath it, are those steel?
No.
Wood?
They're wood.
Okay.
Was there any discussion with the other boards about building this somewhere else and craning it into place?
Not really. There, Wendy Harrington has contacted Jeff Norjo, and the way we understand the construction will work is that utilizing an excavator, he will sit at the town landing, and using the excavator, he will drive the six piles until a point of refusal. Then Jeff intends to construct the frame on which the boathouse will get built, and then I believe Goff Construction is just going to construct the boathouse on the frame. So we explained that procedure to the commission and the Selectmen, and they didn't have any...
Seems...
It could be pre-dabbed off site.
Be a lot less impactful to lift it and set it on that frame that you described after the piles are set?
Well, I don't think it's going to be lifted. I think it's just going to be built there.
No, I understand that. I'm saying it'd be much less impactful if you did the piles, the beams, and then lifted a fabricated structure on...
I would prefer to fabricate it off-site, maybe put it together on there. I don't, I think staging, building the boathouse, and then driving it down the road and using the crane to lift it from a trailer onto the structure might be a little overkill.
You're just literally over the water, so anytime you cut or do anything, you're, it's going into the, going into the water. How do the decks and deck areas and configurations and sizes compare to existing?
It's exactly the same. The only addition is the landing to the southwest of the structure. There's a small landing and a stairway to gain access to the beach.
Where it says proposed steps?
Yes. And then there's also a landing which will provide access to the stone steps that it's going, that are going to go up to the house. I think, I believe it's all going to go up pretty quickly. There's really not much to it. I mean, the boathouse itself, there's not much to the deck, and the, the boathouse itself is 12 by 20, so it's essentially a fancy shed. With decorative trim and a decorative couplet.
All of which will be replaced.
Yes.
Anyone else want to speak in favor of this application? Or against it? No response. Let the record reflect that we've got no correspondence in the file by any of the people who may have been notified of the hearing, or anyone else concerning the application. So unless you have anything further, I'll close the hearing for the taking of evidence and entertain a motion to adopt findings of fact, which would be sufficient to justify a special permit as a by far.
Back to you, of course.
Well, I was just, just thinking about what Matt said about doing the construction there and having the saws and the instruction debris. I think that is a concern.
Well, if you want to condition it, I'm fine with conditioning it to prefabricating it off-site and assembling it on-site.
Yeah.
But I think it's, it would be extreme to require that it be assembled off-site and brought to site and placed there by a crane. I think that would be a significant financial burden on the applicant.
No, I think if it were constructed off-site and then put together, that would make sense to me.
And I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Provided that it can be assembled on-site.
No, I think that, like I said, I...
It's reasonable.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Would you...
And then the trim details and stuff, there's, it's going to be a little...
Right, right.
A little work required to... And you would know Matt better than I would.
There's no second of the motion, so maybe you want to phrase a condition which we can put up to the board?
Aye.
How would you, I think the way that you phrased it was acceptable. Some balance of off-site prefabricated...
That the structure be prefabricated off-site and assembled on-site?
Yes.
Panalyzed.
And I'll restate the motion. The motion is to adopt findings of fact sufficient to justify the issuance of the special permit as a by far, and with the condition as that the structure be prefabricated as much as possible and assembled on-site.
I would second that.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I move the special permit issued in accordance with the plans filed with the application. And with the condition as stated in the previous motion, is there a second?
Second.
Full second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That's the application for a variance. This is a use variance set forth in General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 10, under Orleans zoning bylaws, Section 16448, to convert the second floor of the garage to an accessory dwelling. That's at 16 Jackknife Road, Jackknife Point Road, Orleans map number 50, parcel 100. That's at 16 Jackknife Road, Jackknife Point Road, Orleans map number 50, parcel 100. And I designate the following members to consider this. Myself, Mr. Cole, Mr. McCartney, Mr. Jablet, and Mr. Taub. You may proceed, Mr. Little, please.
I'm Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Little. And I'm here with John and Sherri Souza behind me. And also Charles Ross, their neighbor, is in the audience as well.
Welcome to all of you.
Thank you. So for those of you that went to the site, you can see that there's a dwelling and garage under construction. And one thing that John and Sherri would like to do, and they always thought they were going to be able to do, was to take advantage of the accessory dwelling bylaw because they had a 40,010 square foot lot. When they went before the Conservation Commission with East Cape Engineering, East Cape Engineering did a survey of the property. And if you'll notice, the flood zone, which is elevation 13, crosses the northwest corner of their property. And they learned at that time, they only had 39,740 square feet of buildable upland. And the accessory dwelling bylaw is very specific. You're required to have 40,000 square feet of buildable upland to take advantage of the bylaw. And I think that's something I may even take up with the zoning bylaw task force because personally, I feel having the opportunity to put up a family member, or a parent, or an in-law, or a child who's going off on his own, and being able to take advantage of this bylaw is an important thing in our town. We really have an issue with affordable housing. And in John and Sherri's case, they would like to use this for a family member. So that being said, I told them that our only recourse was to come before the board with a request for a variance. And so I have completed the application for that, noting that we're requesting a variance of 260 square feet from zoning bylaw to construct an accessory dwelling for use by a parent which requires 40,000 square feet of buildable upland. We believe our hardship would be being denied the ability to provide housing to a family member. And we believe the hardship is owing to the topography of the land, given the fact that in 2014, the flood zone was mapped onto this property, which up until that time was all buildable upland. And it reduced the buildable upland to slightly below the 40,000 square feet. So we believe the hardship is owing to the topography. Had the topography been slightly different, we wouldn't be here. And then lastly, we believe the relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or the purpose of the bylaw. And then, as an option, I'm just throwing this out as a suggestion. I know the board, in some cases, have found requests to be de minimis. And I would ask the board to look at the fact that we're lacking 260 square feet of buildable upland to be de minimis in this case, and maybe allowed to move forward. So I know variances are looked at very seriously. I don't really have any other way to explain it than the way that I have. And that would be my presentation. And I and Sherri and John are available for any questions.
May I ask a question, Mr. Marnik?
Yes, Mr. Jablet, please.
The sewage disposal system is approved as per the design?
Yes, and it's been installed.
Okay.
So because the flood zone does not impact the area requirement for the Board of Health, we can count the entire area, the 40,000 square feet. So we are allowed by right to have four bedrooms.
Okay, thank you.
So what we're really saying is, as we've seen the problem before, that before 2014, you had sufficient lot size, and you wouldn't have to be here. But now you do because the area's been remapped. And that's completely topographic. And that's similar to the situations we've dealt with before, which de minimis has nothing to do with it. It's to a question of degree, yes, I suppose, to the extent at which we can determine under the variance, whether there's been, under the variance standards, whether there's been a substantial insult to the zoning scheme. But otherwise, so we don't have a de minimis rule. We take that into consideration as a good try. But variance is the relief that you need, and you are appropriate in doing that.
So the relief really allows two things. It allows for that, for one bedroom to move into a separate structure, and also that separate structure to be a separate dwelling unit, meaning cooking facility.
Exactly. Otherwise, they will, they can still have a half bath in it, but they would have to put a deed restriction on it that it could never be used as a dwelling unit. At least that's my understanding, and I defer to Tom Evers on that.
Well, the question is whether this board ought to be concerned with conditions.
I do like the idea of bringing this to the, separate from this application, bringing this back to the task force to allow for this on lots of 40,000 square feet, period. Not 40,000 feet of buildable upland.
That raises the whole issue of the town assuming, just without, I don't think any discussion, just redefine buildable upland after the new flood plan, with no consideration of what that might do to how many people in this town.
Well, I'll do that, but bear in mind that once, well, suppose we went backwards and we redefine buildable upland or remove that kind of restriction, then we would have the problem of 270 square feet or 2,700 square feet. You see, there's... In other words, the buildable upland could have been the variance or different. The difference could have been a whole lot more aggravated, and you'd never get here in the public, you see what I mean? That's all. But we've had enough of these cases to probably have this discussed before the planning board and those minds, and I'll do that.
Mr. Marnik? If I could point out that when this lot was created, it required 40,000 square feet of buildable upland, which it had. So when the lot was created, it conformed to the zoning.
Yes.
And it's, so I just wanted to point that out.
There are lots all over this town, the same situation?
They lost out, they lost out on that.
I don't think the town had any appreciation for that. And they just kept that 40,000 despite the new flood maps.
Yeah, and down by the beaches, it's extremely aggravated.
Relative to the application before us, I was liking the de minimis possibility because it gave us grounds. If that's not available to us, I am stuck.
Well, it is, it is. Because as I try to phrase it in my own way, it comes into play on the third standard for variance. 164...
This is the hardship?
You see, there it is. Desirable relief may be granted without either substantial detriment to the public good and under the circumstance or nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter. And good minds could determine and make a finding that 270 square feet doesn't substantially derogate from the bylaw.
So...
So it's, in other words, now we can assess the degree of the insult, the way I put it.